Okay, I'd like to call to order the, it is January 12th, 2022, meeting of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission. Roll call, please, Karen.
Commissioner Getzel?
Here.
Commissioner Berger? Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Rags, Stock, Cronin? And Chairman Hayworth?
Here.
Forget about me.
Oh, no. Oh, my gosh. Commissioner Jack Shaw?
I'm here.
I am so sorry.
That's okay. I've been forgotten about many times before by other people.
Not by me.
No.
Hey, Consent Agenda. Anybody have any comments and changes?
There's no for the record. We can approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Public comment. I don't see any public, I guess, what, do I need to read this, Alex?
You know, if there's no comment there, Karen, would you just note for the last item in this item, no members of public present?
Yes, got it.
Thank you.
Hey, reports. Building report. I was, I was on my walk last weekend, and I walked around the backside of Carlton. I go, I don't remember anybody bringing this to the planning commission, then I realized it's an ADU.
ADU. Yeah. So let me, can I explain a little bit about what Randy and I did on this building permit report? At the end of the year, we kind of go through everything. And your next report, very tiny, because all of these final inspections will be off of it.
Thanks.
We just wanted to make sure you saw the end result of that report.
Appreciate that. Uh, Karen?
Yeah.
I noticed that one of my neighbors, and I'm not exactly sure which one, but it's in the 540 series here at Pheasant Ridge, had a furnace replaced today. They, did they, or should they have gotten a permit?
They were in touch with me today.
Okay.
I've been through email, because I haven't been in the office to issue the permit, but I gave them permission to start, and then when I go in tomorrow, I'm issuing it.
Okay, great. I just want to, it's, it's an ongoing issue here, and since we're multi-family buildings, we want to make sure, you know, everything gets done properly and inspected properly, because
Oh, yeah.
if one, if one unit goes, at least nine others are gonna go, so.
No, they contacted me a couple days ago, and we figured it out.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Hi, Katie.
And I have a question. One of the, uh, one of the A Streets, somebody's putting up some fence on Canyon Del Ray, and they said the posts that are there are like eight feet tall. Do they have to go through Caltrans to put up fence along that route?
They don't, not that I'm aware of.
No, and I actually spoke to somebody, I think it was in A Street. I said, as, as long as they were putting it where the old fence used to be,
Uh huh.
was no higher than six feet.
Okay.
So a lot of times they'll put in the taller post, put in the fence, and then cut off the post.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right at six feet.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, um, old business, there isn't any. New business, there isn't any. So, uh, I'd like to relinquish the floor to Alex for his Brown Act review.
All right, for those that joined, uh, after we were initially talking, I promised George to keep this under two hours. Uh, so here, here we go. So I'm presenting tonight on the Brown Act. As you folks know, you've got to, every couple of years, do the AB 1234 training, but John has suggested that we go over Brown Act, specifically, which is just part of the overall AB 1234 training. Um, and it's always a good idea, it's always a good idea to, you know, the hope in these types of presentations is if you come across something, then it throws up a red flag, and then you can email me if you have a question about Brown Act. So certainly, I expect you to absorb everything. I apologize in advance, some of the slides are wordy, just because it's, it's worth quoting law. But anyway, we'll dig right in. And, uh, as you can see here, there's two provisions from the Brown Act, which is, the first provision is 54950, it talks about the people not yielding to public agencies, their sovereignty, and, and the Brown Act is sort of, um, based on the freedom of, pardon me, I want to say 60s, 70s, I was thinking Public Record Act, it, for open meeting laws. Before then, it was just sort of, you know, you had your agenda and you did things, but there wasn't sort of a protocol for that. And, and the fundamental rules, all meetings of legislative body or local agencies should be open in public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of legislative body or local agency, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. So it's, it's part of the sunshine laws, as they say, it's open meetings, and it's notice, notice of what's going to be discussed. Question comes up a lot, you know, what is a legislative body? That's for our purposes, that's city council. It's also established commissions and committees, like this planning commission. Standing committees are subject to the Brown Act, and a standing committee is, is, you know, there's two, there's, there's a standing committee or an ad hoc committee. Standing committee is, is something like the planning commission, you have continuing jurisdiction over, over some aspect of, of city business. Uh, and the other one is if, if by charter ordinance or resolution, the committee is established. An ad hoc committee is one that is sort of comprised temporarily, not by, uh, any, any ordinance or charter resolution. The classic example there is a blue ribbon committee or a hiring committee, things of that, of that nature. So you break it down into two, standing committee or ad hoc committee is your city attorney. If it's a wobbler, I will always recommend that it be subject to Brown Act and meetings be opened and noticed. But for instance, with, with city manager Gertens recruitment, there were meetings held that were ad hoc, and that weren't open to the public. So those are the two sort of, when you think about committees, occasionally, they're not subject to the ad hoc, or pardon me, to the Brown Act ad hoc, but most of the time they are. Who does the Brown Act apply to? Members of legislative body, and those that are elected or appointed to legislative bodies. So that means even before you get sworn in and take your seat, if you're elected or appointed before your first planning commission meeting, you are subject to the Brown Act, and we'll get into a little bit about that momentarily, what that means. And so, a Brown Act meeting, I think this is always an important definition. It's where a majority of the members get together, including teleconference, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, same location, means anywhere, just not noticed meeting. So if you're at George's garage sale, you know, if, if four of the seven planning commissioners get together and talk about what great finds they had at the garage sale, I think you're okay. If that turns into a discussion about, you know, the upcoming agenda, and what should we put on the agenda, then that's a problem. Keeping in mind that, you know, the law, as we say, is always the floor, not the ceiling of things. So if the four of, let's say there's four of you talking, you know, at the end of George's driveway, and you are talking about just garage sale stuff, there's a perception publicly, perceptions are important, so just keep that in mind. But as long as you're talking about anything that's sort of in the subject matter jurisdiction of legislative body, be careful there when you have a majority of members. You know, two of you want to get together and talk, or three of you, and you're not a majority, that's fine, but just be careful that that doesn't turn into, to a majority. And this is the way it, they're called serial meetings, which is, you know, you're not all, the four of you not in one place at one time. But let's say that George has a, has an item he wants to, to put on the agenda, and he talks with Louise and, and Mike, and Mike Hayworth, and, and so that's three of them. But then he, then he calls Mike Berger, and he says, hey, the three of us are on board with putting this project on the agenda. That's, you know, that's a daisy chain meeting there. That's something that you just have to watch out, it can kind of get out of control. I've had, I have had that in the past many years ago, and someone say, well, we all just call each other and talk about what should be on the agenda. Really, you've got to work through your executive, you've got to work through John Gertin, your city manager, or Karen, to get things on the agenda, to talk about business. The other one is a hub and spoke, and that's something where, let's say George is just calling folks individually, and he's the hub, and he's reaching out to, to people and and gaining consensus on, on the topic, or something, go on the agenda. You know, the note here is, you know, there's, there's no collective concurrents requirement, there's, there's not, you know, just, just the contact itself is the problem. You don't have to get everybody on board for something. So reply all emails and social media, there's some new social media legislation that we'll talk about in a minute. George, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you here, buddy, but, uh, anyways, as, as the former chair for many years. So, uh, there are circumstances, as we've alluded to, the end of the driveway scenario, that are not a serial meeting. And that is meeting with your constituents, talking with people outside of your, your fellow members of legislative body, as many as often as you want. And then staff, staff briefings are explicitly allowed. So working through John Gertin, even if he talks to all seven of you, and he is talking about the agenda, and what should be on the agenda, and what are your thoughts, as long as he doesn't create that feedback loop where he says, well, you know, George and Louise want this, and Mike wants this, and all that kind of stuff. So a lot of times you'll see the briefing come from him to, to you guys individually, and then he's working to develop agendas with me or with Karen. Um, and, and that's allowed. The majority of, of a legislative body can meet in certain circumstances. Hey, Bill? Conferences, seminars, community meetings, other legislative body meetings. So you could go to the city council meeting, social events, you know, like our Christmas party, standing committee meetings, those type of things, as long as you're not talking about city business and developing, you know, and, and just chatting about, you know, as long as, as four of you don't get together and, and talk about it, you're okay. So for instance, a community meeting, if you wanted to do that by city hall, four of you could attend, but then you couldn't be in the back talking about the issues city council was, was considering. So you can attend sort of as an observer is the safest way to go on that one. And then grand jury hearings, which is something I've not come across, but is a, is an exception. So, uh, social media, for all you youngins, uh, this is new, new-ish legislation, 2021, and I think this was in response to the contemporary, the modern, you know, liking things and emojis and thumbs upping, all kinds of stuff. So, uh, effective January of, one of 2021, regardless of if there's a majority of, of members, you can post things on social media that are within the, the city's jurisdiction, even if the other members can. So you can be on your Facebook account or your Instagram account, and, and thumbs up a city project, or whatever it may be. It's sort of a unilateral thing, where you are, what you can't do then is sort of react to that communication by, you know, with a communication made, posted, or shared by another member, you're prohibited from interacting with that. So that's the, you know, if Mike posts, you know, thumbs up or tree city for the, for the next year, you know, people are doing the thumbs up, or they're doing the, the posting of emojis and things like that, that's prohibited. And I think that's sort of a, a common sense thing. But so far, I haven't run into anything with respect to that. Now we'll turn to meetings, and what is a meeting? Talked a little bit about it, but it's a regular meeting. This now gets into noticing the Brown Act is, is about, you know, having, having, being aware of what's going to be discussed at a meeting, making sure it doesn't happen outside of a council meeting or outside of a noticed meeting. Regular meetings are those that are set by specific time and place for, for the planning commission. It's once a month, city council's once a month. And there, we'll talk about noticing in a minute. Special meetings can be called at any time to discuss a discrete item of business. Special meetings can have limitless amount of items on there. It's just anything that's not the regular month, scheduled monthly meeting. And then emergency meetings, labor strikes, earthquakes, that type of stuff, you've got to get together and sort of mobilize and, and, and do that kind of thing. Teleconferencing is allowed. There's some COVID updates here that are still in effect. And I think, at least for now, teleconferencing is allowed. Got to allow public participation, just as we do in chambers. You have to make accommodations, just like you do in chambers for those with disabilities. But unlike sort of non-COVID times, you don't have to let, let the public know where you're zooming from, you don't have to give them access to where you're zooming from. No one's gonna knock on Mike Hayworth's door and, and ask to come on in and, and take the meeting from his, from his room there. Uh, and you don't need to post the agenda like you, like you normally would in non-COVID times. And generally, a, a majority, the quorum has to be located in the territorial jurisdiction. So someone could be, you know, telecon, teleconferencing in from vacation Hawaii or something. And now that's not the case. Now you can take meetings from anywhere. But so we'll see, as long as the emergency orders are in place, the COVID rules are those that apply.
Alex?
Yeah.
Um, the COVID rules, my understanding was, when it was modified last year, that every meeting or every 30 days, the agency or board or committee or whatever it was, had to reaffirm that they were going to be that way. Is that still the case?
That's still the case. You'll see that on, on consent agenda during city council meetings is
Okay.
John Gertin, am I right? That's on, that's a consent item, is it not, that we sort of do recurring?
Yeah, it's, it's consent item, and that covers all city meetings.
All city meetings.
Okay.
All city committees and commissions.
Do you run into a problem though, when, on the months that have 31 days, with the law says, we, we ran this today on our veterans committee for the county meeting, we have to basically meet twice in between megs, because it's a 30 day, it didn't say a month, it said 30 days. And so when you have a month for 31 days, you can't do that, your regular meeting, because you'd be, you'd be off by a day.
Yeah, you've got to call special meeting. Good.
Yeah, that's what we do. We have, we end up calling two special meetings in between the regular meeting, just to keep the Zoom thing going.
To keep, yeah, right. Yeah, no good point. All right, so noticing, we talked about, here are the notice periods, 72 hours notice, you've got to post the agenda. The question comes up occasionally. It's after the 72 hours, Karen's published the agenda, and someone gives us some information after that. As long as the, the agenda is posted, we're okay. The packet and packet materials can continue to roll in after that, after that 72 hour deadline. 24 hours for special meetings, emergency meetings, no notice, but there's this sort of a process where you've got to let the local media know that you're going to be meeting. Notice locations, posted in accessible location, generally, that means the kiosk in front of the city, and if the city has a website that they post it there, which indeed we do. As far as what the notice must contain, it's got to have the, the meeting time and place and, and a general description of what's going on. So if you say, consider ordinance 2002-8, that probably doesn't cut it. If you say, can, you know, consider ordinance 2002-8 regarding city, you know, parks, blah, 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 that, that does it. So when I'm, when we're developing agendas, I'm always keeping an eye out to make sure that if someone's walking up to the kiosk, will they know what you'll be talking about at the next planning commission when they read that agenda? And that's, that's the sort of test. There is nothing, can't discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Occasionally, there's, you know, the ability to respond to, to questions from the public or direct staff, that type of thing. Sometimes you'll see me, if someone says, you know, hey, can we put this on the agenda? And the second person chimes in, and then the third person chimes in, next thing you know, we're having a discussion about, you know, a future thing, but it's really, you know, turns into a full, full-blown discussion. So you'll see me sometimes after a couple people chime in and say, hey, maybe we should just table this and, and put it on for, for a, a, a future agenda. The exceptions, emergency, two thirds of the body has to determine that, that immediate actions required, and that came, came to their attention after the agenda was, was posted. So so you can't just sort of say, well, you know, I, I forgot to put this on, let's, let's just throw this on here, can I get two thirds of us to vote for it? From continued meetings, I think the city always just publishes anyway. And then, as we talked about, you know, you can briefly refer, refer to staff, request information, ask for clarification, that type of thing, but you can't sort of get into a substantive discussion about an item not on the agenda. So you can say, you know, council member announcements, maybe, or, or planning commission announce, planning commissioner announcements, hey, whatever happened with this and that? And that's fine, you can direct the city manager, Karen, could you come back with that, could we agendaize that? But getting into the substantive discussion, not on the agenda, crosses the line. So public comment is, as you know, as I frequently interrupt, and, 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 you know, public always has to be given an opportunity to speak before action is taken, not afterward. We don't have a problem with this, but you can't prohibit people from criticizing the, the body, its members, its decisions, its policies, any of that stuff. They have the right to do that, and that's, that's what public comment is for. A lot of times, if there's a very contentious issue, and let's say there's 20, 30 people lined up, the, the chair can say, look, I'm gonna, based on the number of speakers, I'm gonna go two minutes, I'm gonna go a minute and a half. So you always see three minutes, it's been upheld, but it's not sacrosanct. There's an ability to sort of have an efficient meeting as well. And sort of, it's, it's a reasonable opportunity for folks to, to express their opinions, each person. So if you say, well, there's 20 people in favor of this, I want you to choose two representatives to speak, that's not permissible. But what you can do is say, look, there's 20 of you, why don't we, instead of three minutes, let's go two minutes apiece. And as far as members of the public, sometimes you'll see people intentionally withhold their names, and they have every right to do that. Sign each, sign-in sheets are, are frequently used. County, the county will call those that have signed in first and put you ahead of the line, but we can't require people to give us their address, or how many years they've lived here, or their name even. So that's something that you hear people running meetings, why don't you tell us where you're from, or what's your name, and that kind of thing. And the reality is, that's a suggestion, it's not required. ADA compliance is an absolute requirement. The hypothetical you see here, meetings on the second floor, and elevator goes out, I've had this happen at an MST meeting at the Air District Board, and on the verge of canceling the meeting, we asked the maintenance fellow to go down there and, and, and reset the breaker box, and sure enough, elevator rolled up, and, and we were able to have the meeting, because the meeting was on the second floor. For those of you that, that know that conference room. So that's an absolute must. Attendees have the right to record proceedings, audio and video, as long as it doesn't interrupt the meeting itself. And they have the right to the materials, which is, for at the meeting, if, if it's prepared by, by the city, and after the meeting, sort of as soon as practical, if it's prepared by, by some other person, some recent case law on this, or regarding sort of whether or not things were left on the table. But the, but the thing to remember is, if, if the folks at the dais are considering something, the public really ought to have that in from them as well. So sometimes you'll see us ask Karen or someone to run out to the copy machine and, and make those and throw them on the dais. Or if people are handing stuff out, we'll, we'll ask for extra copies and put it up there. Let's see. Disruptive conduct is something that interrupts the orderly meeting, an orderly meeting. If it's unfeasible, an order can't be restored, then the legislative body can, can pause and clear the room and continue in the session. I've seen this only once, and after, you know, I'm a big fan of the rule of three, you know, the chair, you're disrupting the meeting, two, if you do it again, we're gonna have to, you know, ask you to leave, and then three, ask the person to leave. So if a person's being particularly disruptive, you can clear the room, and then slowly let those that are not being disruptive back in the meeting. But just because, you know, it's sort of a sticks and stones, if, if they're saying something, something you disagree with, or, or, or even, you know, insulting that type of thing, is that disrupting the meeting? If they're shouting in the back, it's again, not letting people get to the dais, that, that's a disruption of the meeting. So it's sort of a, it's the chair's call. A lot of times what you'll see is, is a recess call, just to discuss with the attorney, and maybe the executive, and say, you know, what do we want to do here? But really, I think that the best way there is, is a couple of warnings before you take action. Close session is something that, that planning commission really doesn't do that often, although they can. Close session is the city's ability to discuss things outside of a public, of, of an open meeting. And those, it's a real common sense thing, where you don't want to invade people's privacy, or give up the city's negotiation position in, in losses, things like that. So pending litigation, personnel matters, compensation and salaries, labor negotiation, real property negotiations, and security threats and public safety. Those are things where the, the city council or the planning commission can go into, to close session and discuss. Got to announce it before you do, and then I, as the attorney, report out if there's reportable action. Very limited circumstances in which reportable action is taken, because it's normally a confidential matter that's being discussed. Close session, confidential information is not to be disclosed outside of the closed session attendees. Those that, that do that can be referred to a grand jury. And because in the city council's contacts, the client is, is, you know, there's the entire city, and, and a majority speak for the city, that's when they can decide to reveal confidential information. So frequently, I, I talk with council members individually, or planning commissioners, and they say, can I keep this confidential between you? And I say, no, because it's, it's the entire body's right to decide whether or not that remains confidential. And that's attorney-client privilege there. So there are boards and commissions that leak, it's well-known, some do regularly and some don't, and information comes to light that there's no other way that it would have come to light, other than someone leaking. So there are, there is recourse for that. We refer to the grand jury, or, or even the DA's office. Violations of the Brown Act, I don't think we'll go over it, because we don't violate it. Interestingly, on a city attorney listserv that I remember of a few years ago, someone posited the question, if you've got a Brown Act violation, what do people typically do? And the silence was deafening. No one, no one responded as if it, it never happens. It does happen. And generally, if it's, if it's inadvertent, it's, you know, there's not going to be a public flogging. If it's, you know, sort of intentional, it's a different story. So the DA can investigate, or any interested person can bring a civil suit to invalidate an action taken by the body in violation of the Brown Act. There is, there's a few procedural steps before that happens, sort of, I think, an acknowledgement that, that, you know, city government, there are people too, mistakes sometimes get made. Case law talks about substantial compliance with the Brown Act. Gary?
Yeah, sign act, right? We started off, we thought we weren't, we thought we were ad hoc.
Right.
We were like a month into it, and you realize that there was some obscure 1980s president.
Right, yeah.
Ad hoc.
Yeah. It went running faster than I thought.
You had to go cure it and everything.
Yeah, and, and you'll see this sometimes. Generally, this is a two-step, or they go into closed session and talk about this, because there's a threat lawsuit, and they say, you know, a member of the public says, you know, you did this outside of an open meeting, and go in closed session and say, well, let's go, you know, the next time, let's go out there and do it in an open session. So that's the cure or correct letter, in which the city has a 30-day do-over period. And the, the city can do that if they agree with the allegation. If they don't, then it becomes a question of, is the, is the member of the public, or whoever, going to prosecute that because they truly believe that, and then it gets into a fact-finding thing. Actions taken to cure or correct are not admissible as evidence of violations. And that, I think, is a public policy thing. Look, if you, if there's been the allegation, and you want to go back and redo it, we're not gonna take that as evidence that you were wrong, maybe you're just playing it safe, maybe it was a wobbler. This is where, where criminal enforcement comes in. If it, if it's intentional, if, if the violation is intentional, then it can be criminally prosecuted as a misdemeanor. So the whoops, I think we, you know, we accidentally got discussing, but if there's, you know, four of the seven that got together and and made the decision beforehand, then you can run into some, some criminal charges there. So the best practice is for the Brown Act is to, you know, do your 1234 training, review the Brown Act, always feel free to email me with questions, and people do. It, you know, it's not, it's not, don't be afraid of a lack of knowledge, or or I didn't realize this, I frequently get Brown Act questions, you know, can we do this, can we add, or I talked to this person. And so, reach out to me, I'm happy to, to discuss. John Gertin also has been around, you know, public agencies a long time, many of you folks have. But always feel free to, to contact me with questions about, about the Brown Act, and I'm more than happy to to shoot you back an email, or have a phone call and talk it through, because it's not always black and white, and, and circumst- to shoot you back an email or have a phone call and talk it through because it's not always black and white and and circumstances do arise that are are, you know, you know, is an issue of first impression for me. But what I can do is the research. Of course, I always prefer to do it before the meeting and not at the at the meeting. So if the research is required, I can I can go do the research. But with that, I'm happy to to answer any questions. Thank you, folks, for for listening, George. Just under two hours, but again, so anyway, again, this isn't formal twelve thirty-four training, you know, you've got to do that, that's a requirement. But if, you know, it's good to have the Brown Act refresher. And likewise with with ethics or Public Records Act and that, you know, please reach out to me if you ever have questions. And like I said, people do, and it happens regularly and it's, you know, it it's a, it's, they're complex areas. And so you know, don't don't hesitate to to contact me if you have questions. George? You're on mute, George.
You're muted, George.
There we go. I think it's important to just to mention that, say, for instance, I have a concern and I talked to Mike. And Mike's just under the impression that I'm the, he's the sole person I've talked to, then he talks to Gary. And so he thinks it's only two people, and then Gary thinks, well, it was just, you know, and then it becomes a chain. So I think it's important if if I go to talk to Mike to say, you know, I want your opinion on this, I'm going to also talk to Gary, so don't be talking to anybody else. I think that's important to pass on to other commissioners to to let them know that it's going to be of the three or less.
Yeah, good point.
Somebody may take wind of it, you know, the chances are pretty slim, but you just always want to be safe, like you're saying. And another thing that I'm really looking forward to is open meetings at city hall. These Zoom meetings, you know, you sit there at a meeting and somebody's looking over to the side, you're wondering if you're, they're texting somebody else. And, you know, that really bothers me. So I'm I'm really hoping that we can get back to some kind of a open meeting, whether we set it up in such a way that we can sit six feet apart or whatever this the way things are going, this is going to go on forever. And I'm getting, I'm getting tired of it, and I'm sure a lot of other people, but I wish we'd get back to open meetings. Other than that, that's my only concerns.
Anybody else? I have a helper that's hiding my notes. Any announcements from the planning commission? Louise, you have anything?
Nope.
Gary?
Nope.
That's my help, my noisy helper.
He hears a keyboard.
No, Bill?
Sorry, I was late, had a little connectivity issues this afternoon, this evening.
George?
I'm good, thank you.
How are you, John?
Just two things, just glad to see Louise here, see your full team again. And then also, excuse me, wasn't my voice. Karen actually lost her voice. So just so you all know, I I let the council know, city hall is closed all this week. I don't know if you've all seen that or heard that or noticed that, but we got directly impacted by the in the outbreak at seaside city hall. And so that impact impacted our staff. So just my main concern is keeping our police force alive and active and not impacted by all this. So for at least this week, we're going to keep city hall closed. For the next week, maybe two weeks, we're gonna be back in the front office, but only seeing people by appointment. So just people who really need to come in and talk to us, everything else will handle online. So but to George's point, we do all want to get back. So we just want to get back safely.
Okay, well, with that, then the next meeting will be February ninth at six PM. Anybody, anything else?
All right. Welcome back, Louise.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think.
No, I'm happy to see you.
You'll be fine.
Oh, yeah.
Just like before.
Just like before. Okay.
All right. With that, I guess we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you all night.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.